Now, I'm going to plug, I'm sorry to stop this discussion, but please try and make a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We can all stand for a moment of silence, just for everybody who was out there protecting us, either domestically or abroad, and keeping us safe, and, uh... Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 29th, May 2nd, and May 9th. Motion by Legislative Klein, second by Legislative Trudell, any additions, additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. Resolution one, we're doing a budget modification for probation, STSJP interactive journaling.
Every year, the county receives funding through STSJP. It's funded, set up through the state to divert youth from being detained or placed in residential settings. We get roughly 292,000. We have this kind of plan every year. This year, our plan included $4,000 for interactive journaling. It's an out-of-state program, work with youth. They fill out journals, they're working on it, trying to change their way of thinking and their behavior. And right now, STSJP is all funneled to DSS, so we've got to transfer money to DSS into our account.
Do I entertain a motion to move the $4,095 from one account to the other? Legislative Powder makes his motion, second by Legislative Klein, any questions? Legislative Chesbro.
Um, what does safety, O, oath, OTH? Other? Okay, so that's supposed to be safety, other, cover? Okay, all right. And my thing is requesting an increase in the expenditure line and the revenue line. So we're increasing both the revenue and the expense line?
Yeah, from DSS to OFFS, so yeah.
So they're increasing the revenue from DSS, and they're increasing the expense line in OFFS.
Okay.
So it'll be even, and it's a wash.
Okay, and is this for youth, or it's important for youth? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. Next resolution, authorizing a reclassification of three positions in correctional facility share.
This for the three RN positions, trying to bump up their salaries, uh, to on fire with other agencies? They tell you we have four positions, uh, three of them are now empty. Even with this increase, uh, one of our RNs just resigned. This increase will give enough to retain her.
Does that make you short, if one's fine?
Well, we're extremely short. Right now, we're backfilling on overtime, and we're counting with nurses.
Well, you're gonna need more. You're gonna need some more here soon.
Well, we need these four positions filled. Uh, I'm hoping we can fill them.
They just didn't want to be it, or they didn't want to be in the jail, any particular reason?
The problem is, like, as Dr. Nupoff explained, we're in a situation where statewide, nationwide, there's a shortage of nurses. Given that, the hospitals have unlimited funds, they just pass it on to the insurance companies. So they're just raising nursing staff salaries, but it's involved, 30 to 40 percent in the last five years. And we're just, we haven't got in touch with that. So right now, we are just way behind, and down to one full-time nurse in the jail.
Thank you.
Pretty sure this goes along with our public safety study that we, um, had a year or so ago anyways. And this will also give us the proper, um, coverage in the jail that's needed. I am sure everybody was, uh, here for the, uh, presentation from Dr. Nupoff. So I appreciate the efforts that the administration has been putting together over there, and bringing forward to us. I entertain a motion for this?
I'm ready.
Legislative Chesbro makes a motion, second by Legislative Kessler, discussion. No, go ahead. That is your hand, sorry.
Is this enough to bring us up to a little bit closer to par? I mean, if you're vying for these nurses, is this increase gonna be not enough? And we still aren't gonna have them? And we got, you're gonna have to come back to us to ask for even more? I mean, where are we? What do the, what do the hospitals nail people on?
Even with this raise, if Dr. Nupoff was probably not enough. Or saying, what we might end up doing is causing other county nurses to come over to the correction. So, so we're just scaling from there. Because of the raise.
Excuse me, go ahead, Legislative Klein.
Oh, sure. Then maybe I misunderstood that then we're gonna be cannibalizing ourselves. It could cause that. I don't know that, I don't know these people's feelings on it, but I know what happened is we just lost a nurse from the facility going out. She left because it wasn't enough money. She, we sat down with her, she wanted to know what was going on, and told her what was on the table, what we were proposing this raise, and it still wasn't enough to retain her. And she didn't have, you know, I spoke to her in an accident interview, she didn't have ill feelings towards working there other than the pay. I mean, she had to do what was right for her family.
No, it's understandable. Now, these people, you need nurses there 24/7, correct?
That would be nice, but we don't have that.
But you, if you were fully staffed, you would be.
No, we, day and evening shift, not overnight shift.
All right, now, the night shift people or evening shift, they get a pay differential.
Uh, there is, and we're looking at that as possibly a way to resent some people also.
One question.
Legislative Kessler.
Um, if a paramedic not qualified to do what some of these nurses do, I know they can give some medications with doctor's orders, I know that much.
Yes, we've addressed that, we're working on it.
We've talked to, um, a variety of different sources about that, and, uh, they would not be paramedics under the region. There are some industries hire people with paramedic skills, but what you're looking at them to do would be a very limited amount of skills that they would be able to provide to the facility versus an RN. So they, they would not act as a paramedic under, like, an agency. County can't function as their agency. So we have looked at that in a couple of different avenues. Our only option would be, like, the industrial sector who hires people to provide medical.
Thank you.
Legislative Klein.
Yes, uh, one more question, Sheriff. Your weekend orders, when they come in Friday night and release them late Sunday afternoon, Sunday evening. If there's, if they come in with a illness or a problem, whatever the case may be, uh, we're obligated by law to have a nurse look them over, or treat them, or whatever the case may be?
Correct.
And if we don't have the nurse on site, then we are also obligated, correct me if I'm wrong, that we have to take them to a medical facility?
Correct. And that, that is what's costing us the money, the overtime and transports, and then the amount we're giving bill at the hospital. As Dr. Nupoff explained, we're hoping that by having the facility properly staffed, we'll avoid those transports and those medical costs outside the facility. And we're hoping that the savings projected will offset the cost of this salary increase and additional positions that we're gonna get to here on that.
This is, um, this series of resolutions here is something that the sheriff has been working on for a number of months, just to get to where we are now. So please keep in mind this is part of, you know, we had some changes, uh, last month on personnel. We're continuing on with the plan moving forward, so this is just getting us to where we need to be for that department. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Next resolution, um, creation of two positions, deletion of two positions, correction of facility share.
Uh, this is simply, we're just switching things around, it's cost, cost neutral. Uh, previously, we had a typist in charge of, uh, visiting at the jail, operating way out of class. So she has since resigned, so right now, we have a part-time CL in there. Uh, our intention is to delete a part-time CL's position and the typist's position, and replace it with a full-time CL to be in charge of, uh, visiting and screening people coming in, and a part-time account clerk to handle the accounting and booking and the way we're taking funds for commissary and stuff like that. Like I said, the fund-wise, it should be a wash, removing the two positions and creating the two new positions.
Entertain a motion for that.
Got it.
Legislative Klein, second by Legislative Powder, discussion, Legislative custody.
You're talking about, I understand a little bit what you're saying, but when I'm looking at the numbers here, and the numbers confuse me even more. And then you say you've got a shortage on the one end, and then you got a surplus on the other end. And the surplus is gonna take care of the part-time account clerk, but it doesn't take care of the shortage on the other end. So, I mean, it's in your budget, it's gonna come out of your budget, you're not gonna ask for...
Are you gonna ask for another corrections officer to replace the part-time at some point in time, or are we gonna be okay?
No, I, my intention is to do away with the part-time corrections officers altogether.
Good.
Unfortunately, right now, that's how we're staffing some things. Uh, we're down to, I believe, just this one kind of part-time corrections officer that's working in the facility. Uh, we brought, actually, we had stopped using part-time officers altogether, and we brought him back when this typist just resigned, just a week's notice. Uh, so we brought him back to, uh, fill in that position, and as it turns out, he's actually one of the people putting in for an SRO guy. So we'll, I don't know how it's gonna work out.
So, um, Legislative custody, the numbers actually show us that they are a wash, though. I just did the math there. I mean, 44,000 for the corrections officer, which is gonna be replaced with the full-time typist, who's gonna replace the full-time typist, that's $12,000 shortage. The deletion of a part-time correction officer, which is 22,000, that'll result in a surplus of the 11,000. And the surplus of the 11,000 will fund the 700 hours for the part-time account clerk, which equates to $15.00 cents an hour.
I understand what you're saying, as you, your question is, will we come back and ask for the part-time?
Yeah, I get that.
You know, that's not my intention.
Either, either way, I know, it really does, you know, because if you gotta be, you gotta, you have to be manned, and, you know, make it safe and everything, I've got no problem with that. It's just that I, you know, was looking at it, and I was just adding and looking at it. Okay, that's it for me.
Legislative Chesbro.
Um, Sheriff, you mentioned before that you're hoping that you're gonna have a change in the commissary so that you wouldn't have to have that money. How are we doing with that?
Uh, we have bids. We have some wiring to do within the jail, some cat five cable, and it's, it's proceeding, but it's, I'm guessing, three to four months before that's up in money.
Okay, I was just curious how that was going. Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. Next resolution, create a nurse practitioner, part-time physician, and medical social worker in the correction. Sheriff.
I'll go to that one.
Legislative Kessler, second by Legislative Trudell. Sheriff, do you want to explain it briefly?
Yeah, these are just the, uh, positions that Dr. Nupoff thought we needed to fully staff the jail. Uh, one of them being a part-time nurse practitioner. Uh, I know there's some language questions there in the job description. Uh, essentially, what he's looking for is a, somebody to be able to provide, uh, care for female inmates. That's a problem. It is, because anything right now, we have to ship out, and that's essentially what that position would be for.
This is definitely one of those positions that we're forecasting as savings on transports from the facility to the hospital, and we also have to account for overtime, and we have to have deputies at the hospital as well, while they're there. So, um, have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Legislative Klein.
Uh, Sheriff, will this person be assigned weekends also, or is that gonna be still an open provision on weekends? Being nurse practitioner?
Correct. Uh, honestly, that would be up to Dr. Nupoff. He had specific days listed, I don't remember what it, uh, popped in my head, I don't know. But he was making it so we had himself, our current nurse practitioner, in this position. They would split days of the week so that we had coverage, when they needed it. Honestly, I left that up to the doctor to figure out what, what days they would be wanting to work on available.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Stand approved.
Thank you.
All right, so into, uh, departments, make sure everybody's signed the budget modification. Um, emergency management, monthly reports, and then emergency medical services, and they have a state legislation discussion that they want to further on. So, yeah, you could go ahead and give a sure report, let us know what's going on with the lake out there, that we're now over our historic levels, but today is a historic level to the lake.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Yeah, I will, on a handout we have, I'll cover items one and two, and then Renee will pick up with four and five, and the item on legislation. Um, since I wrote this a week and a half ago, a lot of things have changed, so I'll give you the up-to-the-minute. Uh, right now, we're working with winds on the lake, 15 to 30 miles an hour, which equates to seven-foot waves, which is coming in daylight, out of Sandy Pond, Sandy Shores, Mexico Point, that area. Um, we are at a record height for water level, not a lot over 2017, but it is higher. But 2017, we didn't have the winds that we're getting now, and that is just doing a lot of damage. Uh, the lake came up 18 inches in the last month, which puts us at 24 inches higher than the same date last year or so. Uh, and that's even with above-average outflow for the St. Lawrence River. So, um, again, we're, we're getting above-average input to the lake from Lake Erie, which is gonna keep this ongoing for a while. Uh, the current projection as of 5:00 this morning was that Lake Ontario should drop four inches by July 1st, which, if we can stick with that, that would be a huge, huge help for a lot of people. Um, fire coordinators' office, highway department have been amazing in their support, as has state DOT. Uh, to date, I think we're up to about 58,000 sandbags, having gone out to townships along the lake, with town of Sandy Creek being the highest, and around Sandy Pond. Uh, we had National Guard in throughout the weekend, at Greenpoint, and they worked their, they worked their tails off. We even had a Marine drove up from, uh, New Jersey, and a sailor from Brooklyn. So it wasn't just local troops, they'd come from long ways away. So, uh, the next few days are gonna be really tough for a lot of people, and, uh, we'll see how it goes. Uh, the other item, our staff's been preparing for the radiological exercise on June 25th, which is the hemigrated exercise we do every two years. Uh, the exercise on May 21st, we believe went fairly well, went very well, we were told. Uh, we haven't seen a report yet, hopefully later this week. So, um, we are very, very busy 24/7 right now.
Good morning, everyone. So we have been participating with the sheriff and his staff in looking at the jail safety, and what, what should be done in the event there was a fire at the facility, there was another emergency. Um, it's been really nice to have all the players around the table, really looking at that building, looking at what our options are. And I would say, you know, in three meetings, we've covered a lot of ground, and we have some really good plans in place. It's nice to be able to meet with them, to know what the other players at the table can do for them, how we can help to support their efforts. So we've come a long way in a few meetings. We've also been working with Kevin Foley and the EMS mobile CAD. So we are, um, similar to what the law enforcement agencies have done, we are bringing mobile CAD units in the ambulances so that, um, crews can update their status, and they can get real live information on the call. If a law enforcement officer puts a, an update in there, our EMS agencies can see it real time. Um, so we're in the process of getting those units installed, um, the brackets needed to install the units, back some of our units up. We were hoping for a go-live date of June 4th, but it's looking like, um, we're gonna have one agency on by the end of June, uh, mentor ambulance being our largest one, and then the rest of the agencies probably by July. So the information sharing capabilities, um, are really very tremendous with this opportunity. So, um, we're looking forward to that. Moving on to a couple other EMS things, um, Legislative Kessler approached me a little bit ago, if you could just, I'll leave one for you and Phil, and then... Legislative Kessler approached me, um, in a previous report, I mentioned that EMS is not an essential service in New York State. So she asked me to look at what we could do about potentially getting that to be brought to the state level and be changed. So I did a little bit of research, and what you're seeing right now is that in 2017 and 2019, there were bills on the floor. Um, but you'll see when you get them, there are bills to make EMS an essential service for the purpose of state aid, and not an essential service as in a service that would be required by a municipality to provide. So I just wanted to make that distinction for you. It is a, an essential service for the purposes of applying for and receiving state aid. So I just wanted to let everybody know, there is a couple of things that have been out there on the floor before. Um, this one was brought in January of 2019. It's been brought back to the local level. So I will leave that with you guys, and whatever you decide to do with that, and then once you're done with that, I have one additional EMS systems handout.
So, so this particular bill would not do, um, just wanna help with our situation for training, or any of that?
The, no. This, this bill would not help with our training situation. This is simply, well, if the state offered money for training, then yes, potentially.
Grant.
Grant money for EMS training, then yes, if we wanna play the maybe it could. Depends on what they do with this if it's passed. EMS doesn't have a lot of grant topics, grant funding available, so I'm not sure what they're thinking about after this potentially could pass.
So I... I wanna see it go forward. I wanna see us support this so that they can say that EMS providers are essential to the safety of our communities.
But this doesn't do that, though, no?
This particular one would not cover that purpose. This particular one would just say that we're...
We just need to make a new one over this, okay?
It would have to be...
Is there a bill out there that does that?
Not that I have seen, not currently on, in the legislation. I think what, what you're looking for is that emergency medical services would be a required service similar to fire coverage, is essentially what Legislative Kessler is looking for, and this particular bill does not satisfy that.
Legislative Klein.
Yes, Rain, you partially answered that. Um, when we, you mentioned the local municipality would be, we're heading in that direction as far as requirement. Does that mean the fire departments of, like, Phoenix, or Cunnilville, or Claude Noi, or whatever would be responsible? Or is that something that possibly they're looking at the county to do that?
I don't know what. So there's no move right now to make, there's nothing on the floor that makes it an essential service for a municipality. So, um, there would be a variety of different ways that people could do that.
It could be a contracted service, doesn't say that the municipality has to have the ambulance, I'll use Phoenix as an example, they used to, they don't now, but it would require that the municipality provide funding at some level to provide EMS resources, such as municipality provides for fire service. So it could be contracted, doesn't have to be that the town or the county would have the ambulances and personnel, but somebody's gonna have to front some money to have it available. Well, you, you folks are a little younger than me, but, uh, the thing is this, the more you age on, the more acutely you become aware of this situation. I'm on an ambulance there. We've been talking about that since I did here for six years, exactly. But it's not deemed in New York State law as an essential service such as fire, and therefore municipalities don't have to pony up any money to make sure it's there. So you could live anywhere in the county, you could live anywhere in the state, and there's no requirement for there to be EMS. You could sit and wait for an hour for an ambulance. It's just the nature of the beast, and that's why we've been working to try to get legislation so that municipalities would have to provide some level of coverage, but it's expensive. One ambulance, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, is half a million dollars, roughly.
I guess you have to look at what, how valuable one is.
The, um, the next thing that I'm gonna hand out whenever we're finished with this one is looking at a county-wide support system for EMS. We do have a county in New York State that is looking at becoming involved in assisting and providing that support.
Just, just good statement. That's how NOCA works. There are seven or eight counties, and we are taxed on our bill to keep NOCA going with two or three ambulances and paid staff and all that sort of stuff. How much they pay, I don't know, now, hundreds of thousands of dollars or something for each taxpayer. But that's what we have been doing for the last, well, NOCA's about 40 years old now. So we've been doing it ever since it started. So apparently, you're saying there's other areas that do not do that without local ambulance close by.
Or if they do, if they're not required to. So the municipality, municipality could say, we are not providing this funding for the ambulance agency because they're not required to.
Legislative custody.
The only, I hear what Margaret's saying, and I understand her concerns, but if the bills went through, you'd be looking at another unfunded mandate that would be thrown down at the municipalities, that would pass down to the taxpayers. And I got no problem with, you know, paying for that, but, you know, I mean, everybody said, well, here comes, you know, another unfunded mandate, okay? But I got no problem with them supplying us with, you know, a ambulance service. I know that certain cities are cutting out their ambulance services, gonna take it over by the fire department, this, that, and the other thing. You know, we, we've gotta supply some form of support to our elderly, to our people, you know, to our taxpayers, some way, shape, or form. If it comes down as an unfunded mandate, so be it. You know, I mean, I'd be in favor of it, but that's, a lot of people are saying, oh, it's another unfunded mandate. I got no problem. I'll say yes to it. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, Rain.
So the final thing that I wanted to give to you, um, we received an email that NYSAC is gonna be providing a webinar talking about how local EMS organizations are having a harder time with staying operational. So one county, Essex County, got several million-dollar grants. They are hiring some EMTs as county employees, and they're also providing a county-wide flycar system for advanced life support care. So, um, this is gonna be held June 10th, from 10 to 11. I just wanted to pass it out. I'm gonna be in the classroom at EMO for the webinar. You're welcome to come and join me if you want to, to watch what it is that they have to say. So, um, here's one you have there.
I think we all got an email to us, too, that we from NYSAC.
I'm not sure, so, um...
Three of the counties in the news, I think it was.
So there's, if you would like to join me, just to see what they have to say, um, about what Essex is doing, um, it may provide some valuable information for future situations. what Essex is doing, it may provide some valuable information for future situations.
This Saturday or Sunday?
We'll see. All right. Anything else from Dale or Renee? For them? Okay. Nine oh one, I excuse Kevin. He was, I think he's gone to a conference or he had a consortium meeting with all his other nine oh ones, so excuse for that. All he has, his report there. If you have any questions on it, please give me a call. Fire coordinator, monthly report.
Thank you. Basically, self-explanatory, we're up to forty-one structured fires year-to-date in the county. We're now at seventy-six coordinator activations. Scheduling training, we're finishing up a firefighter one, which takes almost six months. And seventeenth, we'll be starting another firefighter one, which will get done about the end of November. We had hoped to schedule a, what we call a summer camp, where we do the interior fire ops portion of firefighter one in a two-week daytime frame. But we only got three people sign up for it, so that's not enough to run it. So, that won't be happening. List, it's some of the abbreviations, but there's, these are a bunch of classes that we're working on scheduling. Pump ops, water supply, tanker task force, home trailer, aircraft rescue, and those going on. Those number of classes, depending on instructor support that we end up with this trip, probably take us through February, March timeframe, and it'll be time to start all over again. Stop the Bleed classes, we've been working with EMS coordinator and with other fire departments to continue that. The CSI, the subcommittee, we're actually scheduling training classes by battalion for the classroom portion of what we're basically calling tactical response. And then, we'll be working with the sheriff's department. We've got training set up through July in Sandy Creek School. So, daytime, first day of those dates will be sheriff's personnel and law enforcement personnel. Second day will be a combination of EMS fire and law enforcement actually hands-on. So, hopefully that'll go well.
If I could just, I would encourage everybody on the committee to try to attend one of those training sessions. There'll be eight of them. I'll put out a schedule, invite it up, just, just as an observer, it's pretty enlightening. Might be the closest thing to a real scenario in your life, I would say.
This is similar to what we did in April of last year, correct?
It would be steps up a few notches from that.
Yep, good idea. ERTC training schedule, we were booked out through November now, and still adding classes all the time. Special Ops, and we're looking for new members all the time. We have some training opportunities coming up. We have part of our hazmat team who's going to go into the fire academy for training, some representatives from hazmat team, city of Oswego and Anadog County will be going to the international conference in Baltimore where they get trained and bring back newer technology and newer training topics to train our people. Other than that, note on here, I'm going to go break this so far. Will be now, looks like in July, if anybody travels that way. On the other page, it's just things we're working on, and as Dale mentioned, would be flooding, taking up a lot of our time, actually deputy coordinator Monnet is in Greenpoint Marina right now, working with National Guard and working on getting some firefighters up there to help through sandbagging as the west winds are not helping that end of the lake at all. We also have resources in the area for swift water rescue if we need them. Spoke with them this morning. There's actually a crew to man the state boat here in Oswego. And I'll just say, it's a resource that the department put here that we did not request. So, that topic, we're here.
Any questions for Dan? I do want to say, next month's meeting is tentatively scheduled for the fire school. We actually have a faculty that, so, I might pull inside pretty good. We can see some active training going on. That's tentatively scheduled for next month. All right. Search or probation, sorry.
As far as RAZI, everyone knows, I think, that our plan was approved. We're still waiting for the state to finish the contract for our reimbursement. Talked to them, emailed them a little days ago, and we were next on the list to look down on that. So, hopefully that'll be seen. The numbers haven't really increased much. We still only had two AOs that went to youth art court, and they were both bumped back down to family court, so there hasn't been any adolescent offenders off of JVs. We've only had roughly fifteen JVs, I think, that have come into the system as far as our department, as RAZI started. So, seventeen-year-olds are going to be this October. We'll see what happens then. I know the county train's office has done some training for law enforcement, so that may bump up our numbers a little bit. Day by day.
What's there, Kansas?
If, if they're not going to go to jail, but they need to be looked after by this network, do we have the facilities that they can go to, or what are we going to do with them, besides probation?
Well, I mean, if we get to the point where as far as the adolescent offenders, yeah, that goes, as far as the felonies, we've got Hillbrook, and there's some, depending on the level of placement, there's detention, there's detention holders, a few facilities around the campus.
And we had to have them on board with us in order for this plan to go forward. So, this, this, you know, the detention centers had to have an understanding with us going forward that they would potentially be used by us.
It's something that expanded a little bit for kids. That was part of the whole plan.
All right.
CDI grant, we're still running the thing for change groups in the jail. Appreciate the jail's cooperation with that. We graduated seven so far. We're running a group right now, and we've got, they should be done with that in a few weeks, and then by the end of June, we're still be starting another group, which looks full at this point. So, it's hard, we start out with a large number in the group, and then they get released or whatever, and a lot, they can be housed out or whatever, but it's a work really long.
Sure. Anything else for probation? Any none? Okay, search and rescue.
Thank you. Since before it was prepared, we've had two more activations with active searches started and two more notifications. So, the last ten days of the month were pretty busy for the team. We've had quite a few trainings taking place. We had a lost person behavior class in April for Hastings Fire Department, and that lasted about eight hours. Our former team director, Roger Fox, who's moved out of state, came and conducted that. And at that class, we had members from the Oswego County team, plus Kiowa, Anadog County, and now the other state police, K nine minutes. It was an excellent, excellent class. We also had five members successfully take the crew loss search training through the New York State DUC in May in Portland, and they all passed. So, that's really great, because it gives our team added resources for people who are able to lead a volunteer crew on a search. And then, we have Project Lifesaver training class taking place in June in Fulton. It's on June fifteenth behind the Board Memorial. And that will involve, for anyone who needs to be recertified, they'll have the opportunity to do that, and then the rest of the team members, it'll be a refresher class. And that's open to other law enforcement agencies around the county. I know that there are some from the New York State Police that will also be taking it. So, that'll be another really good opportunity for us. And one more thing I wanted to mention was, about a month and a half ago, we had a search that was based out of Codnoy, and the subject was found five miles from their house. And the Project Hyper Reach was very instrumental in helping that person get located, because the residents within a radius of the person's home were all notified by Project Hyper Reach. And one of the residents told his wife he wasn't home without it, and she happened to find the gentleman several hours later as she was driving home. So, it was a really good conclusion to a search that could have gone into, you know, overnight. So, that was a good happy ending.
Margaret?
Thank you, sir. The word, your first team up here held this lost person behavior class. I was kind of stuck on the behavior. Is that the behavior of the person that's lost, what they might be doing? Is that what you're studying?
Yes, it looked at different categories. Could be autistic, or someone with dementia, or someone who was suicidal or despondent. There's been several studies done and research that's been compiled across the United States about what typically characteristics of a person might be, places they might be going to, types of things that you should keep in mind during a search, if it's a rural or urban or that kind of thing. So, it went into quite a bit different examples of things that have happened, but it's been documented. I thought that was just English, thank you. It was very good class. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so just two more things before we adjourn. I just wanted to let everybody know that the CSI group has applied for a federal grant pertaining of SRO officers to the sheriff's department. That was submitted on Friday, so we're hoping for a good outcome with that. And I just want to make mention, and it's nothing to do with any individual person, it's to do with everybody in this room. Public safety departments are really working as a team, and I'm very happy to say, and I want to commend each and every one of the department heads for making sure that we're all communicating good and working together. I mean, it's really, our last year or so, this has really turned out great, and especially with the lake level issues on the CSI. I mean, Jan just talked about in search and rescue, how they worked with nine one one for the hyper reach. It's just so evident that we're all putting our constituents first for people that we all work for. So, I just want to thank you to every one of yous for that, and please relay that to your departments, and that we're doing a good job. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Potter. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.